Ten oh one, actually, we're going to call our meeting to order. Please silence, shut off cell phones, and we'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so Commissioner Albertson, you're on the phone? Anybody on the phone? There will be people joining us on the phone shortly.
What time do you want them to call in?
Pardon me?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, well, Mr. Bailey on the phone today. I think we have plenty of things to have him on the phone. So while Melanie's doing that, Mr. Albertson should be calling in. Any additions or additions to the agenda at this time?
Yeah, the two additions from yesterday, the Vawa grant and financial account software.
Pardon me, Mel, I'm sorry.
Just did. The Vawa grant and the financial account software.
Okay, and then, did you add minutes of nine dash?
Oh, yes.
And also minutes? Okay. So, we're still sort of waiting for Mr. Albertson. He was on the phone, we hung up on him till the phone back to conference. And Melanie's sitting in the picture, so if he can follow the dots, he's gonna get to it. So, we can go ahead and public comment at this time? Public comment? There is no public here who wants to comment. Kurt almost, he had something, he's almost wanted to comment. No? No? Okay. Alright, so, I would like Commissioner Albertson on for...
Mr. Bailey said it's busy.
Mr. Bailey said he's busy?
No, it is busy.
That he's busy?
No, that the line is busy for Mr. Bailey. Well...
Set up as a single or as a conference?
Does he have the conference?
Uh, I just sent it to him.
Because if he does the nine four seven seven...
You see, if he's calling the five four one number, then it will come up as busy.
Yeah, it's the eight...
Eight seven seven number.
Yeah. If he's called the normal seven, nine four seven seven...
Yeah, we have one and two.
Good morning, Darwin. How are you, sir? While we're waiting, you want to give any department updates or anything?
Department's busy, building's busy. Things are going good, though. I'll be at Sage Con meeting tomorrow and Friday. This is the normal Sage Con once a year conference. It's being held in Burns this time. We're doing a tour of a burn that happened just outside of Frenchland last year. So, we'll do that tomorrow afternoon.
That's the Sage Con, and ODFW will be there?
Yep.
They made us a promise through that whole thing that they would redo the maps. You're more than welcome to say that Brad's is still wanting to have those maps redone.
I'm glad you gave me like four K the same, so...
In a public...
You would bring that up, but they promised that.
Oh, absolutely.
And we have those overlays that are not... I could use it to develop it.
Hey, Jim.
Morning, Jim. So, I think, Mr. Albertson, are you on the phone now also?
Yes.
Alright, technology, we are there. We have legal counsel, we have Mr. Bailey. We just did a bit of a department update with Darwin here. We're past public comment, so with that, I'm going to continue with Darwin just a little bit. Darwin, a little bit of an update, you had a planners' directors' meeting last week. And also, you said through a phone conversation on a hearing to find out if they were going to follow up with a appeal on our decision. So just a little bit overview on that, if you'll...
The LCDC, the Land Development Commission, they...
I can't hear Darwin.
Sorry, the land...
We're gonna move him up to the speaker here. Sorry about that, Commissioner.
So, yeah, we met in Banden and Charleston, two of the locations, last week, and then on Friday morning, well, Thursday afternoon, I called on for the FSEC meeting where they appointed a hearings officer for the larger 4,000 solar project, Obsidian Solar Centers going through. They appointed Joe Allen to that, and that will be continuing to move forward in that process, which we'll be engaging in. And then, Friday morning, I was on a conversation with LCDC. John Jennings from the LCD presented before them, and then Elaine Albright, staff attorney for Obsidian, and myself, were able to comment on that staff report that John Jennings gave, directing the commission to make motion either accept the LCD's appeal of the solar project or to reject it. And so they accepted it unanimously, and although Elaine and I said it was kind of a waste of the LCD's time, it was solar rule that they wrote and adopted as administrative rule, and the language is pretty clear. I don't understand why they're appealing it, but they felt it's their rule, so they should probably represent it at Luba, maybe sport appeals. And ODFW had no intention of removing their appeal anyways, so you've got two state agencies appealing an approved solar project, all due to not having assurances that mitigation would be taken care of. Your condition was reiterated that prior to construction, an agreement, if not reached by the two parties, ODFW and Apken, then we would have the final say, which is exactly how the rule states. So again, not sure why they felt there would be no assurances that there would be an agreement reached, or at least some mitigation required by the county. But the language is clear that it says "if any," and I, we spoke of "if any." So, we're in for probably a few months before we really even get into deliberations and all that at Luba, so probably within the next couple of weeks, they'll direct me to prepare the record and get that sent off. I'll probably get a jumpstart on it, because it's obviously a large record, so... But that's, that's that, and our meeting was fabulous, and they gave me a ton to... All the planners that were there in the room decided that we'd be writing a letter to the state, also the AOC regarding, you know, ODFW, the LCD coming in at the last minute and maybe demands or, you know...
Because they've been doing this around the most...
They've been doing, yes, and not just us, but to other planning jurisdictions where... I could go into examples if I want, now they take the time, but on the side, we can go over that. But, yeah, there's a whole lot of frustration from county planners.
Now, is it, is it the case that it would still be up to us to decide whether or not there would be mitigation, even though this has gone...
Yeah, that's, that's how the law's written. And "if any," I mean, you can say, "No, nope, we're not going to do any mitigation." It's not mapped habitat, whole five protected habitat, so it's their biological range and, you know...
But we said right in the meeting that, you know, that was, that we hoped that they would be able to reach an agreement before construction started.
A mitigation plan was emailed to me. I'm sure if, we got a copy of it as well, but prior to that meeting, and I brought it up, and Elaine brought it up, and still not been heard. And I understand LCD's in a tough position to go away from their directors, you know, already... They had to kind of just acknowledge and accept that the director had already filed an appeal that they had met before that. That had to happen in the form of a, you know, appeal to them.
Well, I, I mean, we can talk quite a bit, but I believe that their initial appeal, which was, they appealed the planning commission's decision to not allow solar, so they appealed that decision. So, when we overturned that as a board of commissioners, and then they're appealing the decision that we're going to allow it, that's a misuse of their power and their time and ours...
Yep, absolutely, ours too, because it could come back...
To do a placeholder, to just sort of build it whenever we done good work, and it's set up for success with mitigation and everything there for wildlife and the whole work. It, what that director and how they need to know is it really strains the relationship between the state and the counties and the planning directors and the commissioners, whenever the state is clear, they appealed two different ways. That doesn't make any common sense. They're using it as a tool to do something that they're not saying out loud, as far as I'm concerned.
And it's becoming clearer, I think, to us and to me personally, what the actual goal was and the reason why they actually appealed. It might be even a lot more clearer to us if they had actually been present at some of the meetings where they could have answered some of our questions.
And I brought that up too. I said we were very disappointed that the LCD didn't show up either at the planning commission level or at your level. And I even brought up that ODFW also didn't show up at the planning commission level, but showed up only at, you know, for a small portion of the appeal hearings. And so I brought that up. I said, you know, that's, we gotta be better than that.
Well, thinking back on it, we shouldn't have allowed the ODFW's comments from CP 27 to carry on to 28.
And we may not be, we may not do that in the future. We did that merely as a courtesy to them, because that was what they requested.
There's supposed to be a state agency coordination program, working with counties. It's been long dead since the eighties, and we've had planners for the last 10, 15 years been pushing this. Again, some of those planners moved on or retired. You know, those that remain are still trying to see that this is, you know, followed, made state law, that there's supposed to be coordination with, you know, counties from these state agencies, and they don't do it to you. They just show up at the last...
Yep.
I mean, that may, that letter came in Friday before Tuesday meeting. And, you know, the planning commission already denied it, so I mean, it's like, why would it need to be addressed if they're going to deny an application? So, it wasn't there, and then obviously at your level, it had to be, and if it can be approved, then it was addressed, so...
On us allowing for ODFW's comments to carry on to the next appeal process was totally a courtesy, and we felt like that was the right thing to do.
But we didn't miss.
Now that relationship is strained, and it was against the wishes of the representation for the solar site, and we still allowed it. And so, they, they need to realize that next time, it's gonna be a lot harder to make this stuff work.
And, you know, I understand that they still feel like they want mitigation, and they want that agreement to be reached, but if it really isn't with our, is within our purview to decide whether or not there will be any, we could have just stated that there won't be in the meeting and simply put it that, that, that way.
Yeah, it's not mapped habitat. I really feel that that's where we should almost go, because this is private property and...
And we were hoping they could ride that agreement.
You know, and I was sent by a planner from Union Counties, Martell, that said, you know, there was an old case, and any reference of a case in a letter that Oregon is in action had written many, many years ago, but, you know, saying that landowners should be compensated, not going the opposite direction where developers are having to compensate the ODFW, you know, if you're gonna...
As the agencies, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's kind of, it's kind of an interesting situation where, where ODFW is not, you know...
No, I appreciate the update, Darwin.
It's frustration, or...
I didn't know if you and Mark had much of an update, because everybody's been so busy, but...
We've been all busy.
Yeah, well, we've talked a little bit, you know, but I think this is important, that it's not just an update for us as commissioners, but an update for the public to understand kind of what we're all working on and what we're all dealing with every day.
And we have the landowners' appeal, and they have every right to appeal, and we'll see how that goes. If there's something that we missed, we'll be looking at it, but...
But there's a level of complexity to this case that's been brought in that we don't, that I think we all kind of feel was unnecessary.
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's made it a lot, it's muddied the waters in a lot of ways, so...
Frustrating. Okay, so, do we have, are there's other questions of Darwin on his department update?
I really appreciate it, Darwin.
Yeah.
Thank you, Darwin.
Do you want me to give you the...
Okay, so, so we're going very from the agenda, we have Darwin up here, we're going to go right to the Wheaton Foundation request, and I've been, several phone calls with John. He was going to be here today. He's not able to make it, they have some things go on there. His request was going to be today and is today through me bringing it up forward, is they would like to enter into a six-month lease on this piece of property, to be able to go ahead and clean it up and do other things and work on finding avenues of how they can make this property usable, whether it's researching the zoning part of it, if they changed their plan of what they were going to put on it, and all those things. So, that's what he's proposing for today. They'd like to do a short-term lease of six months with automatic removal if they don't get to the, to the, all the questions answered. My thought on that is if it's legal, that legal counsel, we got Darwin here, is that's fine. They, we could get the lease, as far as I'm concerned, for a dollar, and the value of the lease is where they would start cleaning up, and they would clean the whole place up, and that's pretty good value right there. And they would like to build to start that this weekend, which we would not have a lease together, so that's another legal question of a nonprofit, we can allow them to go ahead and clean it. So that's a quick overview from John's through me this morning. He had a small incident or something going on there, he couldn't make it up here in ten meters. So I guess the first question is, is Mr. Bailey and Darwin, this is a piece of ground that we got on foreclosure, it's went through the land sale, it's down to the 60 percent, it's about $22,000, and this group, they're a nonprofit, would like to acquire this piece of property. And by the rules, we can't donate it to them, and then to compound that is what they want to do with it, it's not zoned correctly. So my question is, is can we lease it to them for this six months for them to investigate that and pull it off the land sale?
Can I first?
I threw it out there, see what's going to stick on the wall.
Why do they need to lease it?
Because of the land use zoning is residential, and what they're wanting to do is, the Wheaton Foundation is, they're, they're doing really good work, I need to state that. But they would like to put an incubator building there, other traditional possible housing, the different things. The land is not zoned correct for that, so it'd have to be rezoned, which is quite a challenge. If we leased it to them for six months, they could start that process and look at their, they call it a business plan, but their plan of if they did acquire this property, maybe they went into some kind of residential housing to still fulfill some of their, their needs in the community there. That's just one option, or the zoning. Darwin says the zoning would be quite a challenge. They don't think so, but Darwin is expert on land use, not myself or them.
Yeah, I'd agree with Darwin. I mean, I don't see any problem with leasing the land to them, for them to give that, give it a shot, but, so, we could do that. And we can also allow them as volunteers to start doing cleanup this weekend, that's not a problem. You know, I think we've got our standard waiver of liability that, you know, they're volunteering, and they assume all risk for what they're doing. So we could do both of those things, and, you know, then they can just take their run at rezoning if they want to.
So, let me, let me just...
Step up to the mic, go to the... So, can you, can you, Mark, can I get you here?
Can you hear me? So, as...
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, so...
This is Darwin?
Yeah, this is Darwin. So, ORS, chapter 271 is, you know, the use and disposal of public lands generally in easements. So, in this, you know, they, I want to be very clear that in 271.330, it says we cannot just give this property to them. We can't relinquish title to anybody but a political body. They are not, as in 5923. So, then, then the lease issue, since this was a tax foreclosure property, I don't believe we can even lease this property with them making improvements to it. We ourselves, you know, I remember Bob Partey, prior to me running this program, said, "We can't even improve properties before we sell properties." So, if we can't give it to them, and we can't, you know, have it improved, I don't see how we can actually even lease the property to them. And, and again, the bigger issue is the land use. They cannot do the things they want to do there, and I will say with almost 100 percent certainty, we will not give a zone change on that property. There is no need for more commercial, regardless of what they want to say as their opinion, for more commercial or residential zoning in that area. The, you know, 10, I think it is, Eastern Oregon counties that were allowed to do 50 acres, that has to be an urban growth boundary, I believe. It can't be resource lands, forest or ag lands, you know, as a rezoning kind of situation. So, obviously, Christmas Valley doesn't...
But this is residential, not ag, right?
Yeah, no, it, no, it is ag land.
It is ag land, but it's residential?
It is, has residential use as a home, which would have been conditional use permit.
Oh, so then, I need that clarification. So this, this has a conditional use permit on it, but it's not zoned...
I didn't look that up, but it, it, you know, because it's an older structure, it probably came in prior to land use. I mean, it's a really older structure.
But you just said it was conditional.
It would be if some, like an ag zone, if you want to put a home on it, it, from, you know, the adoption of our zoning ordinance in the seventies, eighties, it then would require a...
So it's zoned ag?
Yes, it is zoned.
So it's eligible for conditional use?
It, it already has pretty much a grandfathered home there, so no conditional use is needed for the home...
If they wanted to change the use of it, they could go for a conditional use?
With the, the uses are allowed in that zone, but, but, you know, industrial, you know, type incubator, commercial building would not be allowed in that zone.
That would not be a CUP process?
No, it wouldn't be allowed. It just flat out wouldn't be allowed. Then all this other housing situation, the only thing I gave you yesterday would possibly could, you know, fly as a similar use would be like a, you know, RV park, campground kind of situation.
But that's when you, we were talking like maybe some tiny homes or something like that.
Yeah, and then RV park, you could, and campground, you could have cabins, and so you...
So what's before us is their request.
Yeah, their request.
And so, you, they want to try to figure out these challenges you're telling us about today. I'm compelled to give them that opportunity. And to give them that opportunity means that we could lease it to them for a dollar, the value being that they're going to clean up their property if in six months, we put it back on the land sale, we have clean property now. That would be the, the value of that. So, I'm trying to put...
I wish I would have more time to review this, this, I'm certain that this ORS describes if you can lease or not. I mean, we can go away from the ORS and take that over, but I don't think...
What about the improvements on the property when it's in that foreclosure process? Even though we're leasing it when it's in foreclosure, that's another question. But then can we make those, have those improvements made on the property when it's still in that foreclosure?
So, unless we've done things wrong in the past, if we take it off the land sale and say the county's keeping the property, and we do that quite often, we are allowed to lease those properties or rent those properties out. We have a lot of them in the industrial area down there, we have them across...
But isn't that we gain through tax foreclosure?
Yes, yes. Everything on the...
That was on fire to me. We haven't, I haven't...
Everything on the west side of the tracks almost has been gained. A lot of those other properties down the industrial park and everything. So, I appreciate you talking that ORS, but I want legal counsel to tell me that the ORS says that we can't do that, and then, then we can't. And I'm only speaking for myself, I don't, for Mark and Dave. I want to try to give this group this opportunity. I know, Mark, you worked with them on this. I believe everything you tell us, Darwin, but I don't want them to come back and say the government just told us no. If we give them the opportunity, a six-month lease is not, if allowed by law, is not hurting us. That whole, the whole amount of tax dollars that come in on that are pretty minimal. If we lease it out, then it goes back on the tax rolls, and they have to pay the taxes on it. It's just like whenever we lease out any of the ski hill, whenever there's taxes used to be owed on that, the airport out there with the racetrack, they have to pay the taxes.
So, their main problem right now is they just don't have the resources or the funds available to purchase the property at the $22,000 that it is right now? And is there anything stopping us from lowering it more than what it is right now to a lower rate for this specific purpose?
Well, we have a policy in place, and policies are not supposed to be, you know...
Yeah, I understand, I'm just, I'm just wondering...
Why do we have a policy we're going to not follow? But I mean, it can be changed every 30, you know, within 30 days or...
Can, but can that, can that, that property sale value, can that be decreased?
No, that can't be adjusted.
That cannot be adjusted?
The only thing that can be adjusted is if you want to change the percentage.
The percentage, yes.
But, but that's, the, the problem with this whole thing is that it's supposed to be available to any, anyone, and, you know, if you change it, then it should be available to everyone at that change rate, and you'd have other people willing to pay you and not just... You know, I, I, I'm happy with their plans, but not at that location, and that'll be permanent ever. I mean, that, that location will not work for what they want to do. And after the meeting we broke yesterday, I continued to speak with them for almost an hour probably, and, and we went over all this, and, you know, recommended they get a hold of other people. Charlie Pike and I as well talked to them about behind the RV park there that's, that's west of Sage Wood Grocery and, you know, has the restaurant. I'm not sure what's changed many, so many times, but right, right south of that, right? There's, there's about half that lot, that's a five-acre lot, that would be available for this, and which would work very well. But they have to contact Outback Retirement Center Group that owns that property and kind of go over that.
So I, I guess...
So there's other options that they need to...
Where I'm at is if we go into a lease with them, it gives them options to look at all that, keep this one here, or an option could be they could possibly purchase it or whatever. There's, there's a process that they have to follow. I agree with that as far as land use.
So is it possible to do the lease, Jim Bailey? Is that, is that doable? As the property sits?
Well, my question, I want to ask Darwin, what ORS you're looking at that says we can't lease it to them? I'm aware about sales, but which way?
And so, 271 has a whole section on leasing and leasing requirements.
Yeah.
And it talks about...
You're, you're saying there's one that we, says we can't lease it to them?
No, I'm not sure if there is. That's why I didn't have enough time between, I mean, I've got a whole lot of those things. So, I'm, I'm trying to review it, and, you know, ultimately, the, you know, how I read this may hopefully not be different, because it's, should be clear, but it should be at all with you guys. I'm just, from all my, you know, what have they not gone through on this, it was something that shouldn't be done to approve properties and to lease them, if they were required through tax foreclosure. It's a different...
Okay, there, there are two things here, this is the way I look at it as a lawyer, two things. One, can we lease the land? I, you know, that is, yes, we can. But the second question is, the activities that they could, they do on the land, that's a, to me, that's a separate question, and I think Darwin's right, that what they can do is extremely limited. So, if they're asking, "We want to lease it from you for the following purposes," then I think the answer is probably no, because they would come back and say, "Well, we leased it," even though it's only for a dollar, "but now we can't do with the property what we wanted to do, and you knew we wanted to do that, so we want an invalid lease." But since it's only a dollar, that doesn't matter. But I think he's right in terms of their, the limitations on what they could do once they have a lease in place. But as a lawyer, my response to that is, that's their problem.
And, and my understanding, they accept that. The, the purpose of the lease is for them to have time to investigate the options to build and get this property for their community up there. And it's, it's not to start building and doing everything they're willing to... They're willing to clean it up for the value of the lease. But they would like to have the options because of location of this property, close to the community there. They'll research their options if they acquire this piece of property. And so that, that's what's been brought to us. And John apologized that he wasn't being able to be here today. He did say he could call in if the board would like to get him online. We can give him a call and have him call in, give him the numbers.
My, my feeling about it is, is we should just lease it to them and then it'll buy us some time and we'll start figuring out what we need to do.
Well, yeah, and, and Commissioner, that's sort of exactly the statement from them and from me too is, is we could do the lease and give time. I know we generally don't try to do things in a fashion that's relatively fast. We try to get everything done, but this would give the option for them to research that. The urgency is, is that it's on the for sale list right now and somebody could walk through and buy it this afternoon. And so the urgency is, is to say that we will enter into a lease, give time for the lease to be able to be done, give direction to Darwin to take it off the land sale and give them permission to go ahead and do some cleaning and get the lease put together by our legal counsel for six months. Does that, did that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with going ahead with this lease if that's entirely legal, being that it's already in foreclosure, it's, it's on the list right now and someone could come in and buy it. I just want to make sure that it's okay to go ahead with this lease process while, because we'd be essentially taking it off the list. We're, we're moving it over the side to keep it safe for these people's purposes if it looks like there's actually something they can accomplish with it.
And, and for the board, over the years, there's been foreclosed properties that come up that we don't put on the land sale list or else we hold off the land sale.
Yeah, there's been a number of properties that we have done that with.
Yes, and so this isn't totally unusual. It's just, we've, we got to-
It's just the exchange of it would be, I mean, those we keep, we're going to use them for, you know, long real for market.
Correct, but this is where actually, we want to make sure we're not trying to show favoritism towards someone where we're taking this off the list, where the gen- the rest of the public have no access to it, and we're leasing it to this, this individual group for a dollar. And I just want to make sure that that's actually legal of us to do. I am 100% in support of what they actually want to do up there in Christmas Valley. And an incubator building is of a huge need for the community and veteran housing. I mean, they, they're hitting the nails right on the head as far as some of the big needs up there. But how we go about utilizing this piece of property that's already in foreclosure status? It's on the list right now where any member of the public could come in and bid on it. And suddenly, we're going to take it off that list and lease it to this group for a period of six months. I want to make sure that's legal. That, that, that's my question, Jim.
Well, you can lease it to them.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's already went through a public process. The publics have full right.
Yeah, it's been on the list for over a year or something, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think there's great opportunity for them. In fact, just yesterday for our housing meeting, we had Gus Bidwell from Portland come down and we had a whole group of guys from the VA. And there actually is a grant in place for properties specifically like this for veteran housing that will help in the purchase of property, acquiring it and developing it into affordable transitional housing for the public. So it actually might, there, there's some big potential there. I'm still waiting for some of the details on that to come back, but it might be just a ticket in what the We Can Foundation actually needs to get this project off the ground. But six months would give them enough time to look at some of those options. So I'm, I'm 100% supportive.
So it sounds like, and Mark did say something similar, that you're in agreement to give them the six month option here?
Yeah.
Okay, so the question, I believe, Mr. Bailey, Bailey, you answered all this. Yes, we can do that. And yes, we could go ahead and give them permission by signing a waiver to go onto that property and do some cleaning as soon as this weekend, as long as they sign the waiver for volunteers. And that would give time enough to put the lease together by the next meeting to be signed by the board. Does that process, sound like the process that would work?
Yes, we can lease it to them. And yes, they can as volunteers clean up any public area. We just want them to sign a waiver. And I'm pretty sure we've already got one that we've used before for people doing those such things.
Okay.
Can I make a request in this lease that you at least acknowledge in the lease that they cannot use this for anything other than residential purposes until they've gone through the proper land use and building? Because there's a huge building element to this as well.
Absolutely. The lease will have in there that will follow all state and local laws and land use, I mean.
Just, Bailey didn't know full well, which I already told him at great length yesterday, that they still can't use this if they require it.
I, I appreciate your frustration, Darwin, but this may materialize that they might end up wanting to buy it and keep it and do a residential house there and sell that to purchase a piece of property later on that is commercially zoned. It'll give them time enough to research all those type of things and everything. But yes, the lease absolutely needs to state that they will follow all land use, building codes and all that. Like, generally, all of our leases will have that in. So, Mr. Bailey, this should be done by motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to allow this piece of property as described in Christmas Valley to be taken off of, direction will be for it to be taken off the land sale and enter into a lease with We Can for six months for a dollar. And the other value of that lease is they have to clean the property up at their expense. And we will allow them as a nonprofit volunteer by signing waivers to start cleaning it up this weekend.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got two seconds. We take marks.
Motion debated and seconded. Further discussion? Mr. Bailey, um, do you have any leases that would fit? Or any draft leases that could be articulated into this? And what's the timeframe to have one of those put together?
Yeah, I can have one done by Friday, maybe even tomorrow. It'd be pretty simple. I just need a description of the property, location, that kind of thing.
Okay, we will have, probably have Darwin get that description so it's accurate to you. Thank you for that.
Well, it doesn't need to be something that's on like the, the county clerk's office would have for a transfer. It just has to have an address so that we can identify the property.
Got it. Okay, and Mr. Bailey, so within that motion, could the lease go ahead and be signed? Or would that be a process that came back before the board?
No, you've already approved it, so we're going to go ahead and draft the lease and get it to them for, for signing.
All right, very good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries. All right, Darwin, I think we're done with you, aren't we? So back up to start, dump fee request. Yesterday, we had a request for dump fees to be waived on the animal house across the way. It's a residential house. You're not going to be taking the roof off this fall. Myself, I believe, we normally do not waive fees on residential houses, even though she says she runs a nonprofit there for animals, which is a very good thing for our community. But it's also a house that she resides in. And we've been pretty staunch that we don't waive land use, or not land use, get to the next one, landfill fees. So myself, unless I hear an argument or a motion to accept that, I'm not ready to waive those fees myself.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is the nonprofit in Rhonda's name?
All I did, I haven't researched it. I haven't researched it. I asked her if she lives at Kimmel and if she's nonprofit, and she said yes to both of those.
Well, the Kimmel may be a nonprofit, but the building itself, is it part of the nonprofit and whose name is it in?
I have no idea. She didn't present anything or give us any literature to that effect.
Well, I, I actually chased Rhonda down actually yesterday and I gave her some information because we have a rehab grant that was just approved through SCOEAD for the purposes of developing and working on different pieces of property. And I told her to try and get in touch with Ginger sometime after the 14th. And just to make sure that that was on her radar. So there might be some possibilities there for her to be able to work with some of those dump fees. But again, she's probably not even going to be doing this project until spring because we're coming up on winter already so far, so fast. I think she's got more than enough time to look at some different options. So I'm, I'm, I have no motion to make.
Okay. Mr. Albertson, any comment?
Uh, no comment. I agree with you guys.
All right, so no motion to waive dump fees at this time. Our next is, moving forward, we got, we're going very far from the agenda here because we have people sitting there waiting. But let's go with the financial accounting software. Is Jay coming for that or just?
Jay's away.
Jay's out of town.
Oh, that's right, I knew that. He told me that.
That's all right.
Hello, Brad. Come on up, ladies. So yesterday, the question was from me was, does this follow the appropriate process? Which is, I believe, we will hear that it has. We do have information front of us now. Mark, you probably do not have this information unless it's emailed to you.
I emailed the team this morning.
Oh, okay.
Did you get that?
Okay, so the, the team has worked very hard getting proposals together. Mr. Bailey and I think Jay or Ann or Nikki one got ahold of you. My question was, is the threshold of the amount of dollars of the one they're recommending to go forward? If giving the quotes the way they done, will follow our contractor review board rules and allowable that way? Which I believe they are, but I just want to make sure on that. Did Jay get ahold of you yesterday?
Well, he did, but then he had to leave the office and I sent an email to Nikki who followed up on that. And you have to get public bids unless you apply one of the exemptions that, that we have in our rules. The one that seems like it would fit would be rule nine, where the board approves written findings by the agency that wants to have the exemption. And the findings show that the, that they support to do this without a bid, that the exemption will result in substantial cost savings. And it's unlikely to encourage favoritism or diminish public comp- competition for the contracts. So that's what we do with rule nine. But otherwise, it would have had to go up to public bid. Now, we've got enough safeguards in that the way they did the process certainly establishes that there's not, it's not going to diminish competition for the contracts because in effect, they really kind of did that. But we just didn't make it note, we didn't notify the public, so we're going to have to rule, use a rule nine. The other issue is the language of the proposed contract. I forwarded my concerns to Jay and then again to Nikki yesterday. As far as I know, that has not been addressed because I haven't seen a revised contract.
That, that has, that part of it has not been addressed, to my knowledge either. And I forwarded your specific concerns to their representative, David Snow. I've not heard back from him yet, so that, that question has not been answered.
Okay, so on the contractual side of it, Mr. Bailey, you have a couple of concerns. If we were wanting to take action today, if it's moving, it could be contingent upon legal counsel's review of those parts in the contract being changed. The contract's quite large, 80 something pages, I believe.
And really, really, truly, we, through this competitive proposal process, we did a cost analysis for several years. We may have an incorrect assumption on ongoing maintenance fees in that cost analysis. So actually, I think we're not ready to make a decision today. Sorry.
No, that, that's the reason why we have the conversation. There's no reason to be sorry, that's-
So we have all the proposal information for you. Again, we got three competitive proposals. We did not advertise publicly for those proposals. We did it through a list of cities and counties that use financial software. So that's how we solicited competitive proposals. We got those and now we need to just further review the costs that would be ongoing after implementation. So if, if we can just hold off for a little bit and give a little bit more information before we make a final decision.
I think that's a wise call. We table this, get further information. Because I did have, as you probably well know, I had a question on the amortization for 25 years and all that. So board, everybody, it sounds like the appropriate thing is to table this, to bring it back next meeting or whichever meeting, all the information gets brought forward.
If that's what you guys feel comfortable with, then yes, we can definitely do that.
I think so. I do. I mean, I, I went through the contract like page by page too. And I have some questions based on what they presented when we were talking with them and what's in the contract. But it's not contractual things that would consider, you know, legal counsel, just things that they said that I don't feel are accurately interpreted in the contract.
They have to do with the workability of the actual program itself and some of the maintenance?
And fees, and fees, yeah.
Sounds like the appropriate thing to table. Thank you so much for the work on this and we'll bring it back forward when you guys are ready for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So back up to SPWF loan, Anne, you're still here?
Yes.
So had a good presentation yesterday from Anne and Larry Holstein, Business Oregon. So this is for the project intake form, which would trigger an actual application for a 20-year loan through Business Oregon for railroad rehab. And the obligation, if that loan is drawn down, to pay that would be a contractual agreement between Goose Lake Rail and Lake County to pay the loan back. What did I miss, Anne, and what would you like to add or not add?
No, I think that captures it. Again, I mean, just to, to explain again, this is a placeholder so that we can show a secure match option for the Federal Railroad Administration Chrissy Grant. Like Brad was saying, we hope not to draw down these funds. We hope that other state funding comes through on a short session. But this is our like worst case scenario. But it allows us to move more quickly with the FRA grant, having this loan approval in place.
The sooner we get the notice to proceed, the sooner we can draw down Chrissy dollars and rehab start. So, yeah. So I'll make a motion that the county enter into a project intake form, which will trigger the loan process through Business Oregon, as presented.
Second that motion.
Further discussion? The minutes did capture that if this loan is dropped down, that there will be a contractual agreement between Lake County and Goose Lake for the payment. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you to the board and to Anne, the team and everybody that's working on this to get our railroad in condition for Red Rocks ship of fuels and for Cornerstone and Collins companies used. Next one, thank you very much, Anne. Appreciate that. Anne, I won't be on the call in the morning. And would you please, you'll give an update on this?
Yes.
I, my, it starts at 8:15 tomorrow.
Yes.
My appointment in Redmond is at 8:15. My appointment in Redmond is at 8:15, so I won't make it.
Okay, okay.
The next one is VAWA grant. How come I draw the blank?
Which was this? This was brought to us by Ted Martin.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Yeah.
Thank you. And we're not, I forgot about that one, too.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. That can interrupt my focus. This is requesting our signatures for applying for the grant. It's not receiving the grant. This is for an application that's due this Friday. It would hopefully be awarded in three years of grant dollars with some match required for a FDVA for three years. And Mr. Martin's working to see if the match could be his time through the state dollars, because he's a state employee. That would be great.
Excellent. Well, we don't have anything for us yet to sign for our signatures.
He did have it in his hand, I think, a motion for us to...
Did he get something to you, Melanie, with that?
I don't think so.
Okay, so maybe we can get someone, get Marla to bring it down or something later, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'm perfectly fine with this. I think we should definitely go forward with some of this project.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion that we, that we go right ahead and start this process and whatever Ted needs to apply for this grant, let's do it.
I'll second the motion. Motion been made and seconded to sign the application for the grant for the district attorney's office. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Clarify, that's the VAWA grant.
VAWA grant, thank you. Financial, county software done that. Public health contract with OHA. And this is an MOU for regular quality. No, I'm on the wrong one.
No?
That's the wrong one. Get there, there it is. All right, so this is an IGA agreement of State of Oregon and Lake County on the public health side. I know that our public health director is tied up in everything that I would like to see quite be working on in the future for whenever these things come before us to be referenced.
Yep. I'm going to try and work with public health and mental health so that when these things come before us, that we get either updates from our director or at least represented from those departments.
Yep. Thank you. So would entertain a motion?
I recommend that we approve the IGA from public health contract with OHA.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to enter into governmental grant agreement between Lake County and State of Oregon, grant agreement number 160670 for the record. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I hope I got you in there in time, Mr. Albertson. Next one is the Second Amendment to OHA Agreement number 159818. And this one we talked about yesterday. There's added dollars coming to two different parts of the program. One is the state support for public health is increasing $7,445. And the other one is tobacco prevention and education program, $5,961 for a total of positive impact, $13,396. I remembered all that off the top of my head.
No. He's got to take it right. I don't know. Are you entertaining a motion?
I would, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we acknowledge and accept the Second Amendment to OHA Agreement number 159818.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Amendment to OHA Agreement 159818. Any further discussion? All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the MOU with the Lakeview area memorandum of understanding between Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, Lake County, Town of Lakeview, and the USDA Forest Service, Fremont, Long Island National Forest, and the USDI Bureau of Land Management, Lakeview District. USDI, what's that? Yes, Department of Interior. Got it? Got it, okay. So Mark, you're the, you've been the lead on this, working with agencies. And you sit on this committee, the air quality committee. And the questions we had last meeting have been addressed, and you're good with this MOU, sir?
Yes, I am.
You could make that into a motion if you'd like.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the MOU for the US Forest Service BLM and the DEQ on their air treatment, or whatever it's called. That wasn't very professional.
You're good. I love, I love the last part, that was great. I'll second that motion.
I'm just wondering if I'm going to repeat the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to enter into the MOU as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Did we get an aye from you, Commissioner, on the other end?
Yes.
All right, you namers. Next item is the meeting minutes of 9:17 work session, regular session 9:18, and 9:23 was, was that a special session?
Emergency.
Oh, that's what the S stands for? I got it, yes. So would entertain a motion on those minutes?
I make a motion that we accept and approve the minutes for the emergency session.
Yeah, what about 9:17, 9:18?
Do you want the actual, okay, yeah. Oh, that's correct. Yeah, we need all three.
Yep.
I'll second.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I was, I actually read all of those. So yes, I'll make a motion to accept all three as presented.
And we have a second. Some motions been made and seconded to accept all minutes, 9:17, 9:18, and 9:23. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So, Mr. Bailey, legal updates for open session?
Not for this meeting. I should have some for our next meeting, though.
Okay, is there anything in executive session for today, Mr. Bailey?
No.
All right. Didn't miss anything on the agenda? Mr. Bailey, thank you for being on the line today. That was important to us.
Very welcome.
And so at one minute to 11, we will adjourn.